All right, welcome to our city council meeting. Today is January 3rd. Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Sean Schulte and then join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as 2011 has come to a close, we thank you for the many blessings you have provided and for guarding our city. We are grateful for the overall health of our city and all that was accomplished this past year. As we begin 2012, we look forward in anticipation of the exciting opportunities that lie ahead. Father, grant us strength and wisdom, watch over and protect our city staff, and guide and direct our every step in 2012. May each of those steps direct us to the center of your will. Father, we lift up to you our friend and colleague, Councilman Griffith. Dave has done an outstanding job representing the citizens of the 5th Ward and the city of Jefferson as a whole. Dave's leadership, enthusiasm, dedication, wisdom, kindness, caring, and compassion will be missed. Father, those same characteristics will serve the citizens of the 21 counties that Dave will serve as Director of the American Red Cross very well. As Dave begins this chapter of his life, we pray for your continued blessing on him and his family. Father, may all that we do and say during 2012 bring glory and honor to you. May the city of Jefferson always be a city of righteousness and goodness, a city pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) .............................................
Once again, welcome to our 2012 edition of the city council. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Griffith.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Okay, number seven tonight. We have no public hearings. Moving on to minutes and reports filed here at City Hall, we want to thank everyone who serves on our boards and commissions here at City Hall. The Campo Board of Directors of November 16th, the Environmental Quality Commission of October 20th and November 17th, October 2011 Finance Reports, and the Annexation Committee meeting minutes from November 3rd. Moving on to council committee reports, we'll start off with the Administration Committee, led by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. The Administration Committee will meet next Wednesday, January 11th, at 8:00 a.m. Thanks.
Next, we'll have the Annexation Committee, Mr. Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last meeting was December 15th. We haven't had a meeting since then, and as far as I know, there are no meetings scheduled at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Moving on to our Finance Committee, Councilman Rich Coon.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last meeting was December 15th, and our next meeting will be immediately following your other two weeks.
Yes, sir. Okay, next we have our Public Safety Committee Chairman, which is Mr. Mike Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met this last Thursday, and some of the things we went through was an update with the Jeff City Police Department on... It's a JCPD. It actually was Public Works on additional lighting up on High Street and the parking lots in Holly Drive. And we also got an update on the code enforcement investigations going on around the Mulberry Street buildings that burned a few weeks ago. In new business, we discussed or got a little information on a new tower agreement going out towards Vineyard Park that is a public safety siren. And we're looking at a couple of new ordinances that we'll be actually looking at a little harder at our next council meeting, or our next public safety meeting. Our next public safety meeting will be, it looks like February 2nd, which is a Thursday at approximately 8:00 a.m.
All right, thank you, Mike. Moving on, Public Works and Planning Committee, Councilman Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last meeting was January the... or excuse me. I'll get this right in a minute. December the 9th, and I reported on it at the last council meeting. So our next meeting will be Thursday, January the 19th. It'll be across the hall at 7:30.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Scrivner. Any other liaison reports tonight? Okay, we will move on. Appointments by the mayor this evening, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests? We have none. Number 11, announcements of upcoming events and meetings, Mr. Nathan Nicholas, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a work session coming up on January 9th, and we'll be going over the proposed purchasing procedure revisions again, and hopefully finishing that up and moving it on to the Finance Committee. And also, we'll be discussing redistricting of the wards following the census. We're now ready to do that. You all should have received copies of the maps, the second revision in that, and hopefully that will be acceptable. If not, we'll make whatever adjustments need to be made, and then we'll set up a schedule for a public hearing on that, and then we'll be ready to enact that hopefully by the end of February.
Okay, any questions for Nathan? Councilman Bray.
Nathan, I think I heard you say that they discussed purchasing procedures and moved it on to the Finance Committee?
Yes. If you recall, the last time we discussed the purchasing procedures, we only got about halfway through, and we wanted to orient the council to the entire thing, and then the Finance Committee will work on the details, and then it'll come back to the full council.
Okay, any other questions? All right, moving on to number 12. No one has signed up for presentations from the gallery. Is there anyone else out here that did want to speak on that? Seeing none. Consent agenda at this point in time will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. I'll oppose. Same sign, that motion passes. Bill's introduced tonight. We'll have 2011-130, Ms. Janice McMillan.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving an amended final PUD plan for the property located at 216 El Mercado Plaza, described as part of the southwest quarter and part of the southeast quarter of Section 4, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This plan is referred from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who reviewed it at their meeting on December 8th and recommended that it be approved. This applicant requests approval of an amended PUD plan to operate a commercial laundry facility in the building that's located at this site. It's a 5,000 square foot building. They intend to operate a commercial laundry in 3,000 square feet of this building.
Okay, any questions for Janice? All right, thank you. Moving on to 2011-131, first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri acquiring property at 711 Mulberry Street in the city of Jefferson, Missouri, using hazard mitigation grant funds for the purposes of clearing the flood plain.
Melva Fast.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would be approval of the purchase of a residential property at 711 Mulberry Street through a grant program. The city received a hazard mitigation grant program about one year ago with the idea that it would begin to clear flood plain of derelict or dilapidated properties along the Mulberry Street corridor. As you can see on the drawing, the black kind of outline is the 100-year flood plain, and this small lot, it's a small residential property, is within that boundary. It has been vacant for probably three or four years, and there has been a history of some problems in the backyard in terms of whether it's sewer problems or some sort of a sinkhole or something, but that really has prevented a sale of that property or anyone wanting to inhabit it. So this would also remove that property, and so it would be just cleared in green space in perpetuity. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Melva? Councilman Scrivner.
Could you orient us, Melva, as to the properties that are residing? The street that would be to the upper right, is that McCarty? I can't read it from here.
That is East Dunklin. So you're at the intersection of Dunklin and Mulberry. That discount bread place is sort of across the street here from this.
I said McCarty, I meant Dunklin. So, okay, that's where I thought it was. Thank you.
Any other questions for Melva? Melva, thank you. Moving on to 2011-132, first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the Personnel Policy Manual for Education Reimbursement Rates.
Gail Strope.
Thank you. This ordinance updates the city's tuition reimbursement program, which is a benefit available for employees. The program has been in place for a long period of time, and periodically, we update the program to keep in line with increased tuition rates. The recommendation from staff is to list the reimbursement rates at the rates up to the amounts Lincoln University charges for a credit hour. And we also have recommended a change to require a grade of B or higher in order to receive reimbursement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, moving on to 2011-133, first reading, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by creating a downtown residential permit parking program.
Thank you. Yes, this bill would institute a downtown residence permit program whereby residents who live in a qualifying unit would be allowed to purchase a parking permit, allowing them to park in any metered spot within a specific area for $20 a month. Some of the restrictions on this would be that the apartment unit or dwelling that they would be in would require to have a minimum investment put into that unit in the recent history. We're using $25,000 for that. And then also, the zone itself would be within a one-block radius of the intersection of Washington and McCarty Street. If you're familiar with that area, it's primarily long-term metered parking at this point, but this would allow someone to basically buy a permit and not have to feed the meter as they park there. The bill would also institute a metered zone in the southern half of the Washington Street block, which is currently unlimited time and without meters presently. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, or Brett? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Ralph.
Brett, has the city provided parking previously?
I'm sorry?
Has the city provided parking previously?
Not on-street parking in this fashion, no. This would be the first of this type of zone that we would be instituting.
What's the purpose of doing it at this time?
Satisfaction requests have been made to the city.
By... By whom?
Be developers in the area.
If I could actually elaborate on that, too. I think that obviously, parking issue has been very... downtown parking has been very controversial lately, and so we wanted to kind of try this as a method that hopefully would be something we could replicate in other places, but it's sort of, I would look at it as a test case to see if this sort of a system will work in other places.
And in my questions, I'm only fact-finding for my own satisfaction. Do we know how many parking spaces are involved? Or do we know how many potential units would be affected?
There's 18 potential units that we're aware of at this time, and how many spaces that would be involved is... I'm sorry to say, I don't have that number on top of my head, but I'd be happy to get it to you after the meeting.
The 18 units involved at this time, are those the ones that have been improved already?
Those are the ones that we believe would meet the criteria laid out in the ordinance.
Okay. Are there other apartments in the area that would not qualify as this bill has written?
Due to the fact that they haven't had recent upgrades, that would be true.
Has anyone talked to the owner of any apartments that are not affected by this bill to know their feelings about it?
I have not.
Okay. I think the figure of $25,000 of improvement is required.
That's correct.
And it's something, I imagine an arbitrary figure.
It was a figure that was brought forward to us through someone who had been through a recent development, yes.
And then, as of January 1st of 2011?
I believe that's what it says, yes.
Okay. Yeah, January 1st, 2011. Is the... as this came together, how... as this bill came together, what was the discussion? How much discussion was there as far as these qualifications? Why not just make the parking available to any apartment that's in this area within these boundaries?
Well, I believe the idea was to make this an incentive for redevelopment. The idea is to promote the redevelopment of properties within the downtown core, and by tying it to a building improvement, it becomes an incentive for the property owner to make that improvement and therefore have this parking available to them. It also provides additional revenue utilizing underused spaces currently. When we run the utilizations in this area, we believe that we can support the apartments that currently exist and some future expansion as well.
So some new business, new revenue?
Correct. There would be new revenue associated with this.
Okay. In a one-bedroom apartment, there would be one permit, correct?
The way the ordinance is written, each qualifying unit would be eligible for one space. Any additional spaces authorized to that unit would be at the discretion of the city administrator.
So it's possible a two-bedroom unit, people sharing an apartment, they each might be able to have a permit?
As written, it would be up to the discretion of the city administrator.
And there's plenty of parking available, and the city's making plenty of parking available, so it would only increase the revenue then?
That is our interpretation, yes.
Proof of tenancy. Is you talking about a lease there? I'm sorry. Section 22, application under A, item 3. If the residential unit is a rental unit, then proof of tenancy is required. I guess, are you talking about a lease?
That would be one proof of tenancy, being a tenant in an area, but in our residential permit parking zone, we've also used things such as utility bills, et cetera, but I think a lease would be the easiest proof of residency.
And under... that was item 3. Item 5 there, consent by the applicant for the city to inspect the living unit to ensure it complies with all requirements. What would such an inspection entail?
In general, it meets the health, safety, and standards as laid out by the code. That's somewhat duplicate in the $25,000, you know, cost through the building permit process, but it's more... I would believe it's a little bit redundant, but it does ensure that this unit doesn't become, if you will, a closet that somebody says now is a unit.
Does the tenant apply for the permit, or does the property owner? Seems to me I saw something about the property owner.
The property owner would have to verify that it meets tenancy, you know, that meets the requirements, and then the tenant would then apply. And Drew, you drafted this, so I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly.
I believe we issue it to the property owner, who then assigns it to his tenant, and that was for really ease of record-keeping. Tenants move in and out, landlord's in a position to know that. If you look under 22... I'm sorry. I was gonna say, if you look under 22264B, an application for a permit may be filed by the owner for the benefit of the resident.
Okay. And finally, the figure of $20 per month, how was that arrived at?
We had much discussion on that, and this goes back to the previous downtown residential permit parking zone, but we also did some studies of those blocks and took a look at the revenue that they actually generate, and this is comparable to that revenue that the spaces are currently generating, making it at least neutral if not increased, because the people that are currently parking there would still... some of them would certainly still be parking there because we believe we have enough volume left for these additional spaces. So it... and then it also corresponded to some of our less expensive lots, satellite lots, within the city.
All right. Thank you very much.
Dr. Pope, do you have a question, sir?
Brett, the only question I have is that within that area, that of Washington Street and a block around, should we have further development? Do we, with these same criteria, do we have the ability within that radius to provide, say, these 18, and then maybe another 25 to 30? Is there room for further development, or would we have to revisit this to broaden the radius?
Depending on the utilization, of course, you know, a huge apartment complex went in across the street or in vacant property or redevelopment, and the number of units was dramatically increased. We might have to revisit whether we have enough spaces. But we anticipate that with the existing buildings that are there and the existing structures that are there, that this would handle us for some time.
Okay. Councilman Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. As the sponsor of this bill, I think there's been enough questions raised tonight to warrant that I pull this, or that I put this on the informal calendar and allow the council members time to ask further questions and get answers before we move forward.
Okay. I think there's a procedure to that. Mr. Nathan?
Well, it's just on first reading, so...
So you can actually do that next time around?
Okay.
But I think your intention will probably stand unless you change your mind, so... Any other questions with that? Councilman Scrivner.
I guess, a question that I have, Nathan, you said that you wanted to try this out. Is there some kind of a sunset provision in this, or is there a way to make adjustments to this?
It doesn't have a provision for making adjustments to it, but it does have a sunset on it.
And what is the sunset?
It's five years, if I recall.
I don't believe it. This does have a sunset. That was in the previous one. This one doesn't.
I thought you said that the permits were only issued for a period of time?
I saw it.
The permits are issued year to year, but there's not a sunset anymore. It does allow the council to terminate the program whenever they like.
It's only a year.
Yeah, I mean, you issue them year to year.
And your rate, is it... when can it be adjusted, the $20 a month rate?
It would be every year.
Annually? Okay. All right. And one other question, was there any consideration given to the precedent of... I think, according to code now, apartments and businesses and so forth have to provide parking, so much parking for so much. Is there any consideration about precedent of future developers and what they might want to do?
Absolutely. In terms of developers who are redeveloping in areas like this, the downtown, other parts of Old Town, where it's difficult to meet the kind of parking regulations, the theory is that this is something that we could replicate in other places, but that's kind of what we want to test and see, you know, how acceptable it is to the public, how acceptable it is to, you know, other property owners and to try that and see. It meets the basic criteria that we heard as the staff coming out of the last one, which was that there had to be a substantial investment tied to it, that there had to be a fee, and it had to be something that was not perpetual, and also that the fourth requirement was that it not be all over downtown. And so this is very limited in its scope. It's tied to investment. It's got a fee to it. We actually sat down with the owner of the Wyomore Apartments, and it's very interesting because he has done this kind of project all over the country, particularly in the Kansas City area, and he has the same situation in all the places where you do this, where you remodel and put in apartments of the parking issue, and the same kind of approach is basically what other cities have followed. And, you know, he found that, you know, he said, you know, "Anyplace I go, they're gonna ask that I put in an investment. They're gonna ask that I put in a fee." Because I just need... Because the fee wasn't a big issue for him. He said, "I just need to be able to say that I have some place to provide parking for these people."
I think Councilwoman Carrie had a question.
Thank you. I have a few comments about the bill, and Councilman Coon and Schulte and I met with Mr. Birchfield, the developer, and he really, like Nathan said, helped us to draft this bill with his experience in previous cities. And I would suggest, hopefully in the next two weeks, we can come up with a few more answers and some more information so that at the next meeting, we may be prepared to vote. I wouldn't say there's a rush, but I know, knowing now that the renovations are nearly complete, and they are beginning the leasing process, I think it would be great for the developer to know that we can start... he can start offering the parking to his tenants. In fact, when this first came up a few months back, and we talked about downtown parking incentives, this is really the reason why, because of the Wyomore Apartments. So I think what we figured out is rather than do a downtown policy, it's really best to look at, since this is truly what was driving that, being the renovation of Wyomore Apartments, that this is what we need to focus on. So this really has been going on for a few months, so it'd be great if we could move it forward so he can know what to tell his tenants. And a couple of things, too, the monthly fee, it is a $20 a month fee, so it's an incentive... well, maybe. I guess the incentive is the tenants don't have to feed the meter, but they're gonna pay $20 whether they feed the meter or whether they pay the city that $20. And this way, they know they don't need the coins to go out there and feed the meter. So it's not really a financial incentive. Like Brett said, we're gonna probably come out about even enforcement. I mean, they'll have a tag. It's not going to be anything out for the city. So to be completely honest, I think it should be pretty self-explanatory in that they're paying $20. And I can tell you, I had wanted it to start at zero, and maybe next year be $10, and the next year be 20. I kind of wanted to see something more incremental to make it more of an incentive. This is not. This is more of just making it easy and convenient where the tenant knows they can park there without having to feed a meter. Setting a precedent, I would say, there are so few large apartment complexes in the downtown. If we had several, maybe that would be an issue. This is a great test. I really can't think of any unless they take the Baptist Building and renovate that into units. I highly doubt that we'll have another large unit. All the other parking is above retail space, and you're talking about just very few tenants. So this really makes sense for this project. Mr. Birchfield did call today and asked if he should be present this evening to answer questions. He has been generous to meet with us and offer us these suggestions from his experiences, and also to offer tours of the units. And he has made a substantial investment in that property that was practically ready to be demolished. It was in such bad shape when he took it on, and now it's an amazing renovation. So if anyone on the council would like to contact Jay Birchfield, we can certainly get his contact information to you, but I feel very comfortable in what is presented for us, and I think financially, it would be fine, and it just makes sense to try this. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 2011-123, third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 25 of the Code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to street names and addressing procedures.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This amendment basically has five parts. The bulk of the amendments affect Article 2, Street Names and Addressing Procedures. First, it assigns the administration of addressing to the city administrator, who in turn will charge the GIS Division with the day-to-day responsibility of street addressing. With the advent and proliferation of computerized address databases, the GIS Division really is in a better position to perform this function today. Secondly- Secondly, it removes the text related to address format, data standards, naming conventions, and related instructions to a set of guidelines. The guidelines will still be applicable to addressing situations, but they'll function as policies designed to implement the code, and those will be promulgated by the city administrator as well. Thirdly, it revises the street name change procedure to follow the notice and public hearing processes of the Planning and Zoning Commission after petitions are submitted. This new format will allow for preparation of a staff report, notice it, uh, to affected parties, receipt of comments from the public and the commission, and then consideration by the city council, uh, at a public hearing. And fourthly, the fees for street name changed are removed from this section to Appendix Y to join the other fees. And lastly, uh, we discovered a relic, uh, pertaining to board of adjustment fees in this chapter, and those will be removed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Janice? Seeing none, any council debate? Seeing none, roll call please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Griffith?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll move on to, uh, third reading of twenty-eleven dash one twenty-four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a ground lease agreement with Missouri Highway Patrol for land at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
First, I'd like to introduce our, uh, new Public Works Director, Mr. Roger Schwartz. Roger, uh, how about a round of applause for Roger? Welcome. Uh, people that are watching out there, they may think they're at a MoDOT, uh, at a meeting instead. Uh, Roger, tell us more about twenty-eleven dash one twenty-four.
Well, this is, uh, uh, redoing an agreement with the Highway Patrol for the use of their, uh, of the city's facilities at the airport. Uh, we've, uh, had an agreement with them in the past. This would reauthorize that agreement, and the cost to the patrol would be six thousand one hundred forty-two dollars per year.
Okay, any questions of Roger? Any hard questions for Roger, his first bill? Uh, any, uh, discussion from the council? Seeing none, roll call please.
Carol?
Aye.
Griffith?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll have third reading of twenty-eleven dash one twenty-six. Oh, I'm sorry, one twenty. One twenty-six.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute supplemental agreement number three to the professional services agreement with Burns and McDonald for the purpose of providing additional services required to complete a boundary survey, Exhibit A, property map for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Burns and McDonald is the engineering firm the city has to do the work at the airport. And, uh, we already have an agreement with them to provide services. This is a supplemental to correct a boundary survey that was discovered, uh, when they were doing their work, that, uh, there was a discrepancy between land owned by the city and the National Guard. So this is to correct that. The total cost of this supplement is ninety-eight hundred dollars, with ninety-five percent of that being reimbursed by the Federal Aviation Administration. And that requires a five percent match, so the city's cost would be four hundred and ninety dollars.
Any questions of Roger? Seeing none, discussion? Roll call please.
Griffith?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, we'll have third reading of twenty-eleven dash one twenty-seven.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending section nineteen four oh one, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule A, Speed Limits, Subparagraph G, Twenty Miles Per Hour, of the Code of the City of Jefferson, pertaining to a portion of Lewis and Clark Drive.
Mr. Schwartz, it's your lucky night.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the roadway that goes through the Lewis and Clark School is actually owned by the city. Uh, the, uh, Eastland Drive in that area has a twenty mile per hour speed limit during school times. This would authorize the speed limit to be twenty miles per hour through Lewis and Clark Drive, which is only used by people, uh, accessing the school. The chief of police has already enacted a twenty mile per hour speed limit on a temporary basis. This would ask authority to make that twenty mile per hour speed limit permanent.
Okay, Roger, thank you. Any questions of Roger? Discussion by the council? Seeing none, we'll have roll call please.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Griffith?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll have third reading of twenty-eleven dash one twenty-eight.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending section nineteen four oh one, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule S, Loading Zones, Subparagraph B of the Code of the City of Jefferson, by the deletion of a portion of Bolivar Street.
Our new Public Works Director, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. On Bolivar Street in this area, there had previously been a daycare, and that daycare is no longer operating. This is behind the, uh, Secretary of State's building. And, uh, this is now, uh, being used by the Capitol Police. They have moved into that area. So there, there's no longer a loading zone needed there to pick up children. So, uh, they have asked us to remove that loading zone so they could use it for additional parking.
Okay, any questions of Roger? Seeing none, discussion by the council? Seeing none, roll call please.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Griffith?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on, nothing under the informal calendar tonight. We have no resolutions. Uh, number eighteen, we have one individual, uh, signed up to speak from the gallery on miscellaneous topics. Uh, please give your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Sorry, Mayor, I wasn't paying attention. I was thinking latter part of last night, or last week, about addressing the council as a whole. But due to the three-minute now timeframe, I really pondered that question. And then when I read the article in this morning in the paper about consent of governed written by Don Northfleet with the New Tribune, that compelled me to come forward tonight. So I'm not going to read you the whole article, just certain portions of it. And for those people that's watching behind those cameras that doesn't get the New Tribune, on their behalf also. But it, uh, states in here, and the reason I'm here is the three-minute issue, uh, second paragraph of U.S. Declaration of Endipenious, that the security is raised, governments are instituted among man, deriving their just powers from the consent, consent of the governed. It goes on that all political powers is vested in and derived from the people. When the people want to come forward to speak on an issue in front of the body, a wall goes up. It's not that I think you intentionally don't want to hear from the people, it's the impression that goes out there. But for someone to take the time and, and has the concerns and wants to express their thoughts on a public forum, first, they got to wait until it comes to that portion at the rear of the agenda, and then they're only allowed three minutes. And please forewarn me ahead of time on that three minutes, because I don't want to go to jail over what I'm trying to say tonight. Uh,
You're halfway there. You're halfway there.
Alright, thank you. I'll try to be quick here. I can recall, uh, you know, there's some new faces here. Actually, before any of you were sitting up here, I had some issues. At which time I could address the council, and it was at the front of the agenda. So that I could go on about my business and the council could go on about their business, and you were also allowed five minutes. Uh, for those that weren't aware of those days, it was a long, drawn-out affair. But because of my ability to come in front of the council, that ordinance was overturned. There's more to that story, but I don't have time to tell it. So what I'm suggesting to you is this, as the people and for the people who are viewing this, they have a voice. And I know you want to hear it. It's the impression that it creates that you're put to the back of the, better not say back of the bus, to the back of the agenda. Because you are concerned what they have to say. So I ask that you move it up to the front of the agenda so they don't have to go through things here that you spent many hours in committee meetings going over, because they had no idea what you're talking about, because they weren't at committee meetings. So to give that impression, yes, as it declares in the Constitution. You are here to represent the people. You do want to hear from the people. But when the wall goes up, what's the point if I only get three minutes? I have a reasonable inclination why that three minutes was implemented. Uh, it goes back to if a sailor dumps in your floor, you don't get mad at the whole Navy. And to be in a council position, you've got to be thicker skinned than that. So I would ask that you consider classic example, okay? I'll close with this. There were some happy things I wanted to share with you that are very exciting. We don't have time. I wanted to acknowledge a councilman that I have such high regards for. I don't have time. Maybe I can use the newspaper. But the people still have to need, demanded that they're heard by the Constitution. Please consider that and change this format, this agenda, so people can come forward and address you. And not have to wait and go back to five minutes, maybe even six.
Okay, moving on to, uh, number nineteen, any council or staff discussion on presentation topics this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, uh, we actually have someone who is leaving our council, that has been said earlier. Uh, we'll start, uh, with Ms. Carol, or actually, Dave, do you have something to say first?
Uh, yeah, yes, I do, and I don't know whether this is the time for it or if you want to, um, I guess, I guess it is.
You have the floor.
Uh, my fellow councilman and councilwoman, and the people of the Fifth Ward and the citizens of Jefferson City, it is with a great deal of regret that I must resign as the Fifth Ward City Councilman. As most of you know by now, I have accepted the position of the Executive Director of the American Red Cross Capital Area Chapter. The Red Cross will not allow any employee to be an elected official, hence my resignation. I will begin this new chapter of my life on January seventeenth, so this will be my last city council meeting. I have enjoyed and been honored to serve with each of you on the council. I truly feel like this council is one of the best in recent memory to serve the citizens of Jefferson City. While we don't always agree on everything, on every bill that has come before us, we have the freedom to express our opinion, to give the reasons why we are voting the way that we are, and after that vote, regardless of the outcome, are courteous and respectful of that person's opinion. For this, I am proud to have served with each one of you. Serving on this council has been a true learning experience and one that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. I have learned a lot from each of you, and for that, I am very grateful. I truly didn't realize how little I knew about Robert's Rules of Order, and I didn't know until our city councillor and now our city administrator has enlightened me. And I still have a lot to learn, but I won't be able to do that here. Jefferson City is blessed to have quality people who are willing to step forward and to serve their community. I am certain that someone with the same qualities that are present in this room this evening will move into my chair in the ensuing months and continue the work that I have attempted to do while I have sat in this chair. I have also truly enjoyed the role of Mayor Pro Tem. Having the opportunity to represent the city in the absence of the mayor has opened doors to me that would have otherwise not been available. I can honestly say that I am proud of our city and its citizens and the rich history that we enjoy by living in the capital city. My resignation from this council will be effective at five P.M. this Friday, January thirteenth. Along with my resignation, I will withdraw my name from the ballot, and that withdrawal will also be effective Friday at five P.M. on January thirteenth. Once again, my friends, I thank you for your service, for your dedication, and the dedication that each one of you shows to the City of Jefferson and its citizens, and I wish you the very best in your service to our community. Thank you very much.
David, thank you for those kind words. How about a round of, a round of applause for David? Tough choice to make. Uh, David, uh, a, a point of information, you said the thirteenth. Did you mean this Friday?
I meant this, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant this Friday, January sixth.
TB, can you edit all that out and just make every thirteenth?
I can try to rewind those words.
Well, you can, you're the TV guy. Okay, how about, uh, comments for the good of Dave, and I'm, I'm sure everyone has one or two. Uh, Ms. Carrie.
Thank you. Dave, I've enjoyed sitting next to you. I'm really going to miss having you here on the council. And you are such a gentleman always. You are a real class act, and best wishes and good luck with everything in the future. And I know I've always admired your, um, your dedication to those who serve our country and those in public service. And I remember one time here in council, we had law enforcement. You're always so dedicated to police and fire. And law enforcement was here about something that they had done, and everybody left. And after everybody was gone, you said, let's give them a standing ovation. And I just remember how special I thought that was, that even though they had left, you still had the respect for the, for what they had done. And I've, I really have admired that quality about you and have enjoyed serving with you, and best wishes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, thank you. Uh, Councilman Scrivner.
Well, Dave, we're going to miss you, no doubt. Uh, you, you gave us some, um, some very kind compliments. And I would just say, uh, back at you, bud, because, uh, there's no doubt you've done a great job. You've represented your, your constituents very well, and you've represented the city very well. We'll miss you.
Councilman Coon.
I don't know what, if I could add much, I think you're, you've served your constituents well, and they will miss you. And I think you've been a, a really good part of this council and, uh, have really contributed to, uh, the council's activities over the year. And if you have to leave for something, I'm glad you're, uh, going to the Red Cross. I think that's a great organization and one that, uh, could, uh, really benefit from, uh, better leadership.
Councilman Harvey.
Dave, it's been a good, a great pleasure working with you on the council. I think, uh, one of the advantages that I have is that I've known you long before the council, so, and we do still run in some of the same circles, so I, I'll say, uh, until next time, Dave. Thank you.
Uh, moving down the aisle here, uh, Councilman Weber.
Uh, Dave is one of the kindest, most caring, honest, and sincere individuals that I've ever met. And that's the truth. I consider you a true friend, and, uh, we're certainly going to miss you, but we're still going to see you in some of the other circles. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Councilman Schulte.
Dave, uh, in addition to, to what I said in, in my prayer earlier, um, thank you for your friendship and, and for the dedication that you have, and, um, just thank you for all that you do. Thanks.
Councilman Pope.
Dave, thanks for your service and for your kind words for the rest of us that are here still. Uh, the, our loss, the city's loss, is, uh, uh, the Red Cross's gain. And I know that, uh, you will serve in that position with, uh, as much commitment as you have, uh, here at the city council. And, uh, I congratulate you on that job, attaining that. And, um, uh, it's certainly their good fortune to have you now at the helm of, uh, Central Missouri Red Cross. But thanks for your service.
Thank you, Doctor.
Councilman Lubert.
Well, I've been involved with the, um, Red Cross chapter here for a long time, so I will continue the association. I happened to be at the board meeting, uh, several days ago when Dave's, uh, selection was announced. And I tell you, I was totally stunned and, and really pleased because I've, uh, learned to know Dave through the city council and, and, uh, knowing how much he is involved in, in civic things and, and how capable he really is. Just this evening, uh, my wife and I were talking over dinner, and she's been involved with the American Cancer Society for some time. And, uh, she brought up that she had found out that Dave had been very closely associated with American Cancer, uh, even chairing the, um, big event that they have at the fairgrounds several times. So, uh, so he is truly a public servant and, and, uh, we'll definitely miss him at the city council. But, uh, our, the city council's loss is the Red Cross gains, and so, um, way to go, Dave. And, and it's, uh, I, I will look forward to working with you on the Red Cross Board from henceforth.
Thank you, Bill.
Alright, Councilman Bray.
Well, I, I've had a chance to talk with Dave in the last several days. And, and Dave has also been my friend and neighbor for over twenty years, so, uh, I, I, I've come to know you very well. And even more so these, uh, these last couple of years when you joined the council.
and even more so these last couple of years when you joined the council, and gave me some inspiration to follow in some of your footsteps. I've really enjoyed the time that we've had to spend on the, working with the city council bills and issues and matters. And I'm going to miss that very, very much. But I'm very happy for you that you get to start this new, exciting chapter in your book of life, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you, Ray.
What some people may not realize is that the people living on Peyton tonight are losing one-half of their representation in the Fifth Ward. However, it's a little-known fact within the city that Councilman Bray lives on the west side of Peyton, and directly across the street is Councilman Griffith. And as your mayor, and as I was running for mayor last year, I noticed that their snow removal was second to none. Speaking of mayors, our former mayor, John Landwehr, had a tradition of sending off council members with a word describing them. Had to think a lot about words for Dave, pocket aces, other things like that, since we play cards occasionally together. But I did come up with a word that I think's the best for Dave, and that's devotion. Dave is devoted to our city, his family, and his faith. Devotion is something that some people can have for a little while. Being devoted to life is something that Dave is and continues to be. He gives it his all, no matter what the cause. Now, 21 counties around Central Missouri will have the opportunity to see Dave's devotion in the leadership of the Red Cross. We all know that the Red Cross is there to help people when they are in need. Dave's devotion will help the Red Cross for years to come. David, good luck. You're a great friend. We'll see you soon. Here's your plaque, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number 21, unfinished business. Any unfinished business to bring before us this evening? Seeing none, scheduled reports. Seeing none. At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve our closed session minutes of December 19th.
So moved?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Is that right, clerk? That's not a, that's a voice. Okay. Next, pursuant to Section 610-21 of the Revised Statute of Missouri, the council now go into closed session to discuss the following litigation. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, we need a motion to do this, so.
So moved?
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Griffith.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
No.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We are adjourned. We'll meet you next door in two minutes.